As we get out, this is probably a lower level of.
That's more of a short-term.
Yeah, so I think that's why you see more adjustment in the near or nearer years.
If our reality is less predictable.
Less predictable. But it is supported by what we've been saying.
But I think the formula is skewed in a way, and I think this is kind of the part that you're trying to fit in there, is we're a percentage of the state. And so I think, you know, even though we may have less tobacco consumption here, other parts of the state may have an increase, and it could be based on immigrant population that comes into the state and so forth, which drives up what would be the sales. So until they get acclimated and accustomed to this, less is best. And I mean, I saw it firsthand. I went to Romania in 2001, and everybody smoked. And so the tobacco companies that basically got run out of America because of the anti-smoking legislation, surgeon general's warning on the packs and all this stuff, they just went overseas and started selling it to other countries and other cultures. But as those people come into the country, and you have an ongoing influx of immigration population, they bring with them that custom. They haven't been acclimated for the last 10 or 20 or 30 years, and so it takes a time. So your tobacco sales are constantly being bumped up, but it would be in another part of the state. But we're a percentage of what the whole state is realizing, and so we're indirectly basically getting additional funding. And that's why I think you see that bump like that.
There are many factors that go into that projection. E-cigarettes don't count, for example. But the projection seems to be supported by our historical revenues and the assumptions that they're making, so.
And those projections are probably coming out of the state financing people, too. I mean, I think.
The data that they're using, too.
Yeah.
So I did want to give you the answer to the question about what the interest rates are that I assumed here. So on the 30-year.
What page are you on?
I'm actually not on a page, so I'm just going to give you the information. So with the 30-year COP, the interest rates that we assumed, again, it's a scale, it's 30 different interest rates, but it averages out to be just under 4.5%. And again, those are assumptions, and that doesn't take into account the difference in the cost, the upfront cost of issuance. And on the 15-year lease purchase, let me tell you that one.
And while Laura's doing that, with the COP, there's this kind of distinction, it probably doesn't make much of a difference, but when you issue the COP, what you're doing is if you do a 30-year COP, we're actually issuing 30 different loans or notes, each one of them carrying a different term and a different rate. So each year one falls off, rather than a lease purchase with an institution that has, is more like a mortgage where you got a loan for a fixed period of time, a fixed interest rate.
Right. And so we assumed a 4% rate on the 15-year, and where that comes from is the indicative rates that we got when we started talking to our bidders. So they know that if we come forward and we have a bid, they're going to be bidding against other people, they're going to be bidding one interest rate, but really what they're going to be bidding is the term, if we do it the way we're suggesting. Because we're going to say, this is a payment we want, tell us the shortest term that we can get. Now, embedded in that is, of course, an interest rate. And then if we follow the strategy, if we don't like that, or we don't get something within our, that's short enough, given the payment, we'll compare it to what we can get in the COP market, and we can go that route.
So we may end up with a non-standard term, maybe 18 years or 17 years or something like that.
So I'm at the end, page 18.
Laurie.
Yep.
Oh, Laura.
Laurie.
Laurie.
Yep. Yep, I put it right on page, cover page.
On page three and on the cover page.
So today's meeting is just a presentation and information. We're hoping that you would consider authorizing the county administrative officer to obtain the lease purchasing financing bids in the range of 3.9 to 4.1 million. So that's another thing. We would ask our bidders to give us leeway in that, because if we got a really low interest rate, we might want to borrow more. And then on May 26th, if that bidding goes well, we report back to you and ask for authorization to go ahead with the financing based on the best bid that we received. Or if we don't like the bids, we would say, we're going to leave that in the past and go on to the COP process, which is a little more involved. So that's what we're recommending. And then I have a reference section here, and this is where I wanted to discuss the project's leased property.
Before we get into that, let me do what you're asking for today. 3.9 to the 4.1, and assuming this here is, obviously, we have more projects on our capital improvement list or document that would exceed this, maybe even double this. But the focus on this is to try to structure it to stay within the means of what would be enabled by the tobacco settlement. And I'm sure you had this already, but just for the benefit of the general discussion and for those who are listening to the videotape to do it, is we've already, as a county, committed with the JPA, with the city for the pool, 200,000 of the 300,000 that's there for a 15-year period of time. We're ending our second installment period in July, we'll be doing our third installment, and we would have 12 more installments on it. So we've already indicated that that's how we want to use those funds. And that was over a 15-year period of time, and that was to accumulate to a point where eventually they would have enough money to be able to build and operate a pool. That's the theory. What this here does would supersede that. So we're staying within, you know, the framework of the tobacco settlement funding available. But instead of doing it with just the pool, we're actually doing a pool and these other two improvements in terms of reorganizing the space. So we're getting a lot more bang for the same buck that we're primarily spending. But I just want to make sure that people clearly understand that this isn't talking about a new tax or a new revenue, it's using those existing revenues that had already been partially pledged for this other project, but using it in a way that stretched out over a little longer period of time. You're talking upwards of 20 years, but it would be designed to capitalize on those monies and having them be available. Is that where we're at? Okay, here's one. I think that's important for the discussion.
One other point I think that's worth making. We're contributing 1.1 to the JPA. We're also going to continue to have an ongoing contribution.
Of about 80,000 to 90,000.
Yeah. Just, I know those of us.
That's only for 12 more, only for 12 more years, it's not the full length of this timeframe.
So if we take a look at page 20, that's where I'm addressing the property subject to the lease. So if you're going to do a lease purchase financing, you have to have collateral, which is the item being leased. And one of the things that is a credit issue is that lenders are not that excited about loaning you money and having you use the thing you're buying as collateral for the lease. And imagine a car. You get a car loan, and let's say you get it fully financed, and you drive off the lot, and a day later, the car is damaged, right? The collateral is less than the principal on the lease, right? The collateral is diminishing value. And in this kind of a situation, nobody who is lending money wants to take the collaterals. What they want is that losing the collateral would be so painful to you, you would never not make your payment. Does that make sense? So what we're talking about is for the initial collateral, we would use the sheriff's administration building and juvenile hall, because those are essential purpose buildings. So the people lending feel there's no way that Lassen County is going to not make a payment and lose access to those buildings. And it's not as if they can come and take those buildings and move them somewhere else. It's just that they could come in and bar the door and say, you can't use these. And then we will have a clause that allows what we call substitution of collateral. So in the future, if you wanted to substitute something else that had sufficient value for whatever reason, you could do so. But the idea here is that when we go to borrow money, that's why our interest rate's going to be set. We want the best credit picture that we can put forward to get that lowest cost. And I just want to state that anybody who lends money to the county of Lassen is counting on the good faith of the county to pay it back. It's not, you know, banks, even though they read all the documents and they'll probably drive the county council crazy and with all their questions, and if we have an initial bond.
That won't take very long.
Okay. But even though we want to do everything as right as rain as we can with the legal documents, we still need to remember that there's an underlying good faith commitment. We don't want to borrow money, we don't plan to pay back, and we will be making a budget allocation every single year on this payment. And that, they are afraid of, you know, investors are afraid that someday the board won't do that. So we want to set that up so it's clear that we certainly have every intention of doing that. So let me ask you.
And when we did the 1989 financing, they allowed us to build an adult detention facility with jail itself, a collateral that was planned. One of the buildings was the historic courthouse. So there's no way you want to default on those, because of course, the revenue stream that was established for that was the contract with the state for the return to custody facility. But that's the same kind of principle. We weren't about to give up the courthouse just to welch on the financing.
Right, no welching, please. What was your question about the real property?
No, you answered my concern, because the people have been told that the $200,000 committed to the JPA is for the maintenance and keeping it open. And now you're taking that same amount of money to use to pay off a COP, I'm assuming you're going to go COP, with using collateral. And stop misunderstanding this, but you're going to take the collateral of not the pool that they don't own, the property they just gave away, but you're going to take substantial necessary buildings that county owns and put those up as collateral, and so they can give 1 million, 1.7 million dollars to the JPA. Are you following me?
Yes.
What is very disconcerting is that this county has not been willing to do a proper CIP. They don't want the public to know how much is out there. So we get a mini version of a 10-page CIP. The public's now in this little tiny thing. And they want to buy or lease a BLM building with this money. They want to give some of this money to the JPA to finance construction. And what has, is going to end up, if this is, I have to tell you, this is the most bizarre bad news that the public is going to get. They have $4 million excess every year. They can't, they don't want to take 1.7 and buy a building. This county doesn't build anything. They never have and they never will. And if the public thinks they're going to get 3.9 million financed over a 30-year period and take what they thought was the tobacco money to pay for this financing, that's now not going to go to the JPA, they're not going to do good things with that 3.9 million dollars. I mean, I've lived here 15 years, other people have lived here four years. This is a bad idea.
Thank you.
Thank you for letting me talk that long. I appreciate not being cut off.
Okay, yeah, don't happen very often. I won't even know there, I can't, I'm lost, go ahead.
I would just correct one thing what you said. You said that 200,000 went to the JPA was only for the operation of the thing, it was actually for the construction, operation, and maintenance. It's all encompassing, so it goes for all that, not just for operating.
Everybody's doing half of it, the city.
Comes up with the other half, yeah.
Okay, Laura.
Laurie. Laurie. See what I did?
Go ahead.
You can call him Bobo.
Thank you very much. That concludes my presentation.
I won't forget you.
Chairman, I have to say, this is one of the best presentations I've had on this kind of a complex issue I've listened to over the years, and I really appreciate.
I have your name, Richard.
One other point that I wanted to make, I think the boards were, even though as a policy statement, we're going to be recommending that we use the tobacco settlement funds for the debt service payments, as a matter of fact, we will be pledging the general fund for that purpose in the event that those funds are insufficient. So I think that's an important distinction.
Or if a future board says, we will take the 300,000 out of this pot of money and use the tobacco settlement money for something else.
Well, Richard also led us to believe that if we designated that fund, that it would be a higher interest rate. Laurie, I have some questions for you. On the interest rates, there are fixed rates, right? Do they reset every 10 years or?
No, we're actually proposing a fixed rate financing.
Okay. Is there prepayment penalties?
Excellent question. So we always recommend our clients issue with a ability to call. Now, it's not like a mortgage. In California, I'm not a lawyer, but my understanding is the reason that all, we don't have mortgages, we have deeds of trust, and the reason their home deed of trust is prepayable at any time has to do with some court cases. It's not, in other states, banks don't necessarily do it that way. And we're entering into basically a custom transaction, and the bank would love it if we would say, we'll never, we don't want a prepayment option, we'll just stick with it forever. That would be to their benefit. We don't want that. We want to be able to prepay for a very important reason, which has to do with the yield curve. And so I'm going to try not to be overly complicated with this point, but Mr. Egan talked about earlier, if you were to do a COP, there's 30 different interest rates, because there's a different interest rate for each maturity. So that's a yield curve. Another place you see the yield curve is if you open a newspaper and you see the US Treasury yield curve. The three-month rate is less than, the six-month rate is less than, and it goes like this. So let's just say we do a 15-year financing. So here's the 15 years, and we get one interest rate, we get the rate for 15 years. And let's say 10 years caps, and we still want to pay it off in 15 years when they have five years left. So we might be able to refinance at the then-five-year rate. And the only reason you wouldn't be able to refinance for savings would be if the then-five-year rate was higher than the 15-year rate was today. And that would mean that the entire yield curve shifts up. So for that reason, there's tremendous value in being able to have a call option so that you can refinance. And we actually have a term for what I just described, where you had a 15-year deal, now you redo it into a five-year deal. We call it rolling down the yield curve, so that's a little term of finance art. And we definitely want to have a call option, and that would be one of the things we put in our bidding requirements, that we want the 10-year call. And we may have people, different people bid, sometimes they'll bid a 10-year call and they'll want a premium. We'll want a no-premium call, but we'll be able to calculate the value of a no-premium call based on the different bidders and if they bid different interest rates. So like, for example, two bidders gave us the same interest rate, but one had a zero call and another one had a 1% call, obviously, we'd take the zero premium call. Does that make sense? So we have a way of.
Manipulating the.
I don't like the word manipulation, I like the word quantifying, all costs.
All right. Okay, so when you present these bids, who responds to your bid requests?
That's a great question. So believe it or not, there's a national market of banks that like this kind of paper. They don't necessarily have to be in California, and a lot of it has to do with, they get various incentives from the federal government to invest in local government paper. And there are, this would be what's called a bank private placement, and some of those banks might want to deal with us directly, but because we represent the county, if they don't have somebody to represent them, we will put a broker-dealer in between them and the county, because we want to make sure they're represented. Or they will have to represent that they themselves are a broker-dealer. So for example, SITI, which they keep changing, SITI Corp., SITI Bank, it's currently S-I-T-I, they're both a bank and an investment bank, so they can represent themselves, right? But like, the community bank of whatever, Susanville, I don't know if you have one, they might want a bid, and they are probably not a broker-dealer. So we would bring in a broker-dealer to represent them, we'd refer them to one. And then there will be broker-dealers who already work with banks, and sometimes, this is interesting, we'll actually have the same bank putting a bid in through two different channels, and we don't care, because our goal is competition. The more competition, the lower the cost to the county. That's our goal.
So are you telling me that there's a possibility that these bids are connected to treasury notes? I kind of picked that up, and I don't know if that was what you meant.
Oh, no, no, what I meant was that they're going to, the banks that will bid on this will be holding it in their own portfolio. It's not being set up so that they can resell it. So they have certain incentives where they can write off certain costs of having it, you know, it's like an extra deduction for them that they have so much of their capital invested in tax-exempt municipal bonds. And there's actually something called a bank-qualified municipal bond, where they get a special tax credit from the federal government for holding what is called bank-qualified paper that no other investor can have. And the reason for that, historically, I believe, is that the federal government thought it needed to encourage banks to invest in infrastructure in this country. And this has been around for decades, this special tax credit. So there might be banks, for example, that would bid in this, and they didn't bid a year ago in something similar that we were bidding, because they weren't in a position to take advantage of the tax credit. Now their tax manager says, hey, we need some more tax-exempt paper, and somebody says, oh, look, I just got a bid form from Lassen County. Great, let's bid on that. Or maybe they didn't bid because they couldn't use the tax credit. I know that's a lot of detail, but part of what we do, part of what we do is we're always looking for new banks that are interested, and one of the things we will absolutely do is contact any local banks or any banks that you know of or that your cousin works at. And I don't mean branch banks, because we have relationships with all the major money center banks. But if there's any banks that you know of that might be interested, let us know who they are, and we'll be glad to contact them and see if they want the bid form.
Okay.
I've got two more questions.
Go ahead.
Okay, as we pay the principal down on the pool, the aforementioned pool, is it possible to use the pool as the collateral as we refinance?
I'll take that one. The pool property, as was noted, will be owned by the Henne Lake Valley Recreation Authority, a separate entity from the county. The county is going to be borrowing the money, pledging the assets for this financing. So the short answer is no, unless there was some sort of amendment to the authority that it wanted to take over, you know, maybe part of the debt of the county, part of the debt of the city. So I think practically the answer is no.
And this one's actually for Richard. The leased property that's mentioned in here, is there debt on that property now? And if so, could we find out how much?
The property that we're considering using for collateral?
Yes.
No.
We paid cash for it.
Okay.
Good. Careful right now.
Okay, I have another question.
Some public entities, when they take on this type of debt, instead of putting up, because some entities, like LLED, a utility, doesn't have buildings and things they can put up for collateral, but the lender will ask that the public entity secure a reserve fund of say, half. In this case, I would suggest, if you're going to 30-year loan, to put in reserve a portion of up to maybe paying it off in 15 years. That can be easily calculated. And it also earns interest for the public entity, and we don't have to put up the jail or any, is that possible under your plan to take as collateral a reserve fund that can't be touched?
So we have a reserve fund figured in, and that is shown on page 13, it's a perfectly fine page to show this. And you notice that you see the words surety bond, it's right above the word rounding, okay? A surety bond is, we actually, it would be financially inefficient to have a reserve fund, because interest rates are so low. We would be borrowing, even though we're borrowing at a low interest rate, the reserve fund would be invested at an even lower rate. So that would be what we call negative arbitrage, borrowing in one market at a high rate, investing in another one at a low rate. So that's a cost. So in this market, what we recommend is the difference between that negative arbitrage, in that negative arbitrage situation is actually more than the cost of buying an insurance policy that replaces the reserve fund. So then, if for some reason we were labeled a payment, I guess Warren Buffett's insurance company would have to make the payment. And then, just so you know, what happens is that insurance company steps in as a creditor to the county, and that's exactly what happened, for example, in the city of Stockton bankruptcy. Their biggest creditor is the bond insurers, who are fighting them in bankruptcy court because they've paid their bonds. So the reserve fund, it's a credit feature, you cannot do a securities transaction in the market without it. It's not because it's illegal, it's just the market won't accept it. The banks don't require it, since it's a net cost, we're thrilled if we do a lease purchase, we don't have to have that cost. Now, for agencies that can't put up real property collateral, they pay a higher interest rate in the market because they're not as creditworthy. Our goal is to have this financing be as cheap as possible. The lower the interest rate, the more of our budget is paying down the principal, and the faster we get rid of the debt. So we don't want to have a lesser credit profile to the market. We want the best we can, the lowest rates, and to get rid of this debt as fast as possible, because we do that as the risk management position, is to get something we can live with for the term of the financing, and get rid of it as fast as possible. That was the risk management perspective that we took at the staff level.
Two things. First of all, you know, a lot of focus has been given here momentarily for, as it relates to the swimming pool, and that's only 1.1 million of the 4 million dollars. So it's only represents roughly 25% of what these monies are being intended to use there. So, you know, sure, there's some unique aspects to that, but the quantifying, the basis of this is more than just dealing with the pool. Actually, what it came down to is this was a greater need, we're dealing with the other issues, and it was convenient to incorporate the pool into it. So this is not driven, I would say, by the pool project. And I appreciate Richard being creative in seeing, and this is his unique background, having been the treasurer, tax collector for all the years he has, plus his other finance experience, and he's been very good at marshaling those forces in terms of how to package this. And I think that's why we pay him the big bucks, and I know that some people are critical of that. I would just say that, Laurie, that you, I don't know if you ever thought about teaching a class? Because you, in just a very short period of time, discussed some of the most complex issues that we struggle with or deal with as local elected officials in this kind of a setting. And you did it with such clarity that I'm just totally in awe. And I think if, after you kind of retired from your active career, if you ever decide to be a professor of how to do it, you can hear there.
Would you like to speak about marijuana?
I think that when I get back home, I will be discussing this meeting with others just for the value of sharing an interesting experience. And I will share with you that I do teach, in fact, Richard has been a big supporter of our speaking at the County Treasurers Tax Collective Association. I guess you're not going this year. We're going to have a good time. And I am speaking, but also in two weeks, so in my august list of places that I speak, I'll be flying to the East Coast, where I'll be training the Securities and Exchange Commission enforcement officers who deal with municipal bonds. And I actually think they're going to be a much more challenging audience, because 100% of them are lawyers.
They only have one here.
I have a hypothesis, which I'm not scientifically.
Here we go.
My scientific hypothesis is that if someone became a lawyer.
My scientific hypothesis is that if someone became a lawyer, they liked words better than numbers, and if they had liked numbers, they would have become a doctor. So I, I, I'm always ready, and I will tell you that as you were discussing, you know, the legislative process, I was completely confused, except that I did hear the number six, and I heard-